The City Council regular meeting for tonight, Thursday, September 12th, 2024 is now called to order. In-person participation. In-person participation by the public is permitted. Members of the public not attending in person will submit written comments prior to the meeting by emailing your comment to the acting deputy city clerk at d9plemeth.org before 3:30 PM on the day of the meeting. Email public comments will be distributed to the City Council and make part of the official record. This meeting is being recorded. Council chambers or wheelchair accessible if special accommodations may be requested by contacting the deputy city clerk 72 hours before the meeting. Please silence all cell phones or similar devices at this time. Could we please have a roll call? Councilmember Amerusa?
Aye.
Councilmember Sim?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Vice Mayor McLaughlin, absent. Mayor Ackerman?
Here.
Thank you. We have a forum. Would everybody please rise for the clinch of allegiance?
What do we do to the flagline of the United States of America? And if you're a believer, which stands one nation under God, individual, the liberty of justice, or none?
Item two, Google City Council regular meeting agenda for tonight, September 12th, 2024. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Amerusa?
Aye.
Councilmember Sim?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item three, public comment. Under provisions of the government code, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time. Please submit a completed speaker supplemental form to the deputy city clerk. Comments are limited to three minutes or less, and speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence. For public comments on agenda-ized items, speakers will be called by the mayor and point on the agenda when the item will be heard. The City Council is prohibited from materially discussing or acting on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or an urgent need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Yes, if you have public comment, please come on up.
Good evening. I'm Bobby Carpenter. I apologize I didn't submit a speaker supplemental form.
That's okay.
But I did just want to come out and kind of give an introduction about myself and what I'm trying to do, so. My wife and I moved out here into Plymouth in 2018 to the Hockford Park and Dale Road in Willow Creek area. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to open up a wood shop down at the end of the road. I think at this point I might have had a discussion with most of you guys on one-on-one, but I kind of wanted to make it, come up here and make it official and let you guys, and let you guys and the public know what I'm trying to do. I'm in the metal building down the end with the star on it at the corner of Empire and Bain. And so the idea is, it's pretty simple. It's pretty, it's custom woodworking and design. We've submitted, this week, we've submitted the building permit to get the ball rolling on the regulatory stuff that needs to happen. The idea would be, is the back half of this building is going to be where would be woodshop woodworking equipment, and the front half would be like a gallery shop display space. And that's, that's pretty much it. Me and the building over in Francesca Lodge were both motivated to kind of do something here, kind of wake up a little bit, wake up a little bit of Plymouth down there at the end. It's just kind of exciting for me is, it's my little idea of Mayberry slash Plymouth is, you know, my kids are going to the Montessori right down the road. And the Plymouth Elementary, you know, just a little further down the road, so they walk over after school, they're sweeping the floors, and I mean, it's just kind of like this neat little thing I'm trying to get going. And all I wanted to do was just come here and kind of let you guys know that. That's all. Thank you.
I have a question. Would you be, would there be retail sales out of your shop?
I would try. I mean, retail sales, like, it would be the things that I have created, like, yes.
I mean, like, would you be, for example, would you be opening, like, on the weekend, if people are strolling around and they come in and they see something and they want to buy it?
Right. I haven't, I haven't really nailed down the hours, but the idea is yes, yes.
Okay. Cause you mentioned a gallery, and so I didn't know if that was.
Yeah, gallery sales, you know, aren't even bought.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, friends and neighbors. My name is Jim Weiss, and I live here in Plymouth. And I have the privilege of chairing the committee that's helping to build Harvard Memorial Veterans Park. And as you may know, under the memorandum of understanding that exists between the Rotary Club and the City of Plymouth, we have a responsibility to report on a regular basis back to the City Council as to progress that we're making in the park. And my presence here tonight is to just provide that up in for you, if I may. I would say that it is our intent to have that park opened and dedicated and completed by Veterans Day this year. That is a lofty challenge. We are striving and working as hard as we can to try and meet that deadline. I'm hoping that we'll get there. We've got some logistical considerations to read a little bit of those snacks here, and then we'll work through them. And I'm hopeful that we'll be up and ready to go by Veterans Day. We had a great work party in the park today. We made a substantial amount of progress to getting the cedar fencing up along the backside part of the wood, as you may know, so donated to us by a generous donation by Brian, the head owner's brother. Got more than enough wood for the park, and I think that we have some surplus wood that I think the city may be interested in using to complete the fencing around the remainder of the park. We'll work with the city to ensure that we're restoring that and stacking it in a way that is not intrusive or intrusive to you in the park accessible for when the city is ready to go. We'll stack that for you. We've been, so as you know, we are going to have six polished black granite, five feet high slabs surrounding a flagpole that will have engraved the names of all of the men and women who provided military services in this country from District Five of the Superior District in the county. If we don't get those names right, it's not like we can erase them. So we are being incredibly diligent to ensure that the names that we have researched and validated that are eligible to be engraved on those stones indeed are spelled correctly, that we don't have duplicates, and that we've got no mistakes that we are making on the slabs. And that has been one very large logistical challenge for us to go back and forth with the monument company to ensure that on the way out, we are as good as we can possibly be. I'd love to tell you with a hundred percent confidence, I wouldn't be there, but. Some of it, that's my time going up. Go ahead. Anyway, we have 619 names, and I think that we'll have the final list to us by tomorrow, one last proving run, so we'll have that done. We have met with Ron LeBenco, who's providing and donating the services to do the demolition of the existing slab around the flagpole. And then we'll do the grading for us for the new slab that we are pouring. Concrete work will begin on Tuesday, October 1. We'll commence that construction, including the footings for two-foot bridges that will span a royal ditch into the park with a spur coming out of the Caltrans Highway Trail into the park that will try and link up with that bridge as well. So we're coordinating the Caltrans for that element of park design. The bridges have been ordered, they have been constructed, they are kits that will be delivered as soon as we have those footings in place, and we just don't want to store it in the park, so we're going to do an on-time delivery if we can. The bridges are coming up from Texas, and it's the same company that has all of these footbridges for the California park system. I think that's all I can report. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I just really wanted to thank an incredible work crew that was in the park today. We will finish up that fence first thing in the morning, but we had some really wonderful help today, and I'm pretty grateful for that. I'm sure thank you for the end of the meeting, since you're here. You actually pointed out some of the things that I was going to mention as well, but I want to thank you and John Culver for doing a terrific job, leading the charge, bringing this whole show down. I also want to thank supervisor Brian Nettle for donating all that lumber, and it's a lot of it. If anybody has a chance to see the spence, it's pretty impressive. And he delivered all the lumber for the fence. And he and John did a terrific job of managing this crew of people. Thank you for allowing me to come down and help. We have a good crew. I'm sure you'll use them for things beyond the fence. They have a future. It's a good work crew.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It was great. It was great.
And in addition to the donation and contribution by Brian, his brother, we got really great support from Ace Hardware and others that donated all of the concrete that we used for the footings for the fencing. We got great help from Lowe's and Meeks in Martell for the materials to allow us to install the fencing. So we've got just terrific support from our local businesses as well, all of which will be acknowledged in the park. And at least 20 hardworking volunteers.
Yeah.
That's impressive to see all those people down there working hard. Yeah. Not so there today, but it's been some pretty hot days in the past, and we're gonna work on this. Great. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
And John too. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I'd like to present a apology. I wish you luck. Exactly what we needed to make sure. I hope you're successful.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? There was public comment now. Number four, presentations, proclamations, appointments, there are none. Five, consent calendar items. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the City Council and will be adapted by one motion that you've already listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless, before the City Council loads on the motion to adopt members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action. Then on the consent calendar, we have correspondence. That's been received. Five, that's 5.1, 5.2 is approved the regular meeting minutes of August 22nd, 2024. 5.3 is received the August warrant register. 5.4, approved resolution 2024-14 approving an amendment to the standard agreement issued under the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program Coronavirus Response. 5.5, receive a report on the pool for the summer. We're going to be giving that report orally, which is what we have in writing. 5.6, second reading and adopted ordinance 2024-04 of the City Council of the City of Plymouth amending Chapter 8.02 of the Plymouth Municipal Code related to burn permit regulations. 5.7, second reading and adopted ordinance 2024-05 of the City Council of the City of Plymouth amending section 9.06.020 of the Plymouth Municipal Code relating to establish perks as a smoke-free environments. 5.8, second reading and adopt ordinance 2024-06 of the City Council of the City of Plymouth amending sections 14.08.110-14.08.3 of the chapter 14.08 of Title 14 of the Plymouth Municipal Code relating to discontinuation of water service for non-pain. I'll open this now to public comment. Have we received any public comment from? Is there anybody here in City Hall who'd like to make public comment on this item? Okay, nobody? I'll close it to public comment, and we have a motion to approve the consent calendar items.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Amerusa?
Aye.
Councilmember Sim?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman?
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item six, public hearings, there are none. Item seven, regular agenda items. 7.1, receive a report on the purpose and use of community benefit fund established in the Zippendell Development Agreement for ordinance 2012-01 on March 22nd, 2012. And can we please have a staff report?
As I was before tonight, at the request of Mayor Ackerman, the community benefit fund was established with the Zippendell Development Agreement and is paid by the developer in connection with the development agreement. With each lot, as it is sold, depending on if it's sold with a house or vacant, depends on the amount of money that is paid into the community benefit fund. An empty lot pays 1.6%, and a house pays 0.4%. The money deposited in the fund gave use for specific things as it's found out in the staff report. Currently, there's $247,303.42 in the fund. To date, there's been no money from that fund spent. And I can answer any questions that the council has and take any direction that the council would like to give towards that fund.
Thank you. I'll open this now for council discussion. Any questions? Councilmember Amerusa? Councilmember Sim?
I'm not very clear on what's made to be used for. I've read these four bullet points, like, four times. First two are not clear, I swear. Or could you clarify providing loans to develop impact mitigation program funds or other funds to advance planning or construction of projects? What that means?
That's a great question. Councilmember Sim? That's the language that was in the DA. It's horrible. Yeah, it certainly is, to be clear. I agree with that. But essentially, the way I read it is, it can be used for that first category, for things that would aid development, future development, such as a, we have a development impact fee schedule, for example, right? Development, development impact fee schedule, so developer, they pay, so I should use for various categories. Some cities develop a development impact fee mitigation program where essentially you have to pay a certain schedule, but you meet certain criteria, and it can reduce that amount. So this could be a loan to that account, offset and incentivize future development. So that would be an example of the first category. Essentially, things that would aid in lowering the financial burden of development in terms of impact fees, and if they do that, the theory, the theory is behind that incentive is that would help incentivize development. Because whatever, there's any development, just generally, in general, developer has, they have spent a lot of money upfront before they start seeing money come in. So it helps them defer that cost till later, because it's just a loan, right?
We could loan them money for their, their, their best of fees.
Exactly.
Environmental impact fees.
All sorts of.
Anything, anything that could help somebody's. Give the ball moving.
Correct, correct. It's only a loan. They sometimes pay, but the idea is these are going to pay it once they start getting money back or selling houses and stuff like that. So that's the first category. Do you want to explain the other ones?
Yes, please. I'm just unclear about that one, this first one.
The seventh, and these are just taken right from the VA, so unfortunately, the VA doesn't provide any more clarity on this. When you go to the second one, it's loans for reimbursing costs in advance for past projects. So let's say this example here is the city's long-awaited type-like project, so this could essentially reimburse the water fund for that project, that service. Does the city take out a loan from the county, from AWA for that?
A bond.
It actually was a bond. Okay, so it could repay the water fund for that, but it can only do it so in a loan. So there's still, there's going to be an interest charge. But it's a way to help repay, repay past projects, not future projects, just past construction projects. And in terms of the third category, this one is probably the broadest. It says constructing and enhancement projects. So what that tells me is it has to be some kind of public improvement project or public works projects, some infrastructure project. We actually live in construction, because the word constructing. And then enhancement project, that's probably to be anything that the city reasonably uses, something that enhances the city. So infrastructure projects, waters, water, pipeline improvement projects, all sorts of things that we probably have on our current capital improvement project list for future projects, we could go to that. And then for the fourth, fourth one, purchasing capital equipment to approve service to city or assets. Now the building purchasing equipment that could be used pretty broadly for future city. So obviously, the third and fourth categories, there's the most flexibility there.
The fourth, three and four, I couldn't, four, totally, I, we desperately need a, a dump truck. That's perfect. I saw that, I saw, I saw dump truck, yeah. We have 1958 dump truck, isn't it, isn't it? Okay, so that makes sense. Margaret, is Phase Three Tim Lewis, does he care about with his payments of this fund? Has it been up to date? Is it, is it current?
He is up to date.
He's up to date. I didn't understand, with 50%, I guess, when it goes over a million dollars, since 50% goes into a, to a I guess, an interest-bearing situation, right? We're a long ways from $9,000, so that doesn't matter. Yeah, so. That's right off. Thank you for clarifying those things. I appreciate it.
Margaret, thank you for putting this together. When I was reading through the development agreement for something else that came across this, and I know I've seen. Peter, I'm sorry. And Keith.
Yeah.
No, I'm all right.
Just jumped in.
Keith?
Keith.
My, my question is pretty much answered by you, but they can start in there, the enhanced projects that can be used, like, something like, I shouldn't start using right now. Yep, right, because that would be enhanced by that area, so. No, you're good.
I think I did that tonight, too.
I know, I know, I'm out of here, so that's how we're all going to treat me.
I think that there's probably a lot of ways and ideas of what this money could be used for. When I saw it, looking at bullet item number two, what came to my mind was something to do with water, and even could we use this? I know that we have a, we had an agenda item for, to discuss West Water, Water West, their report. We haven't been able to discuss that yet, but I think there's, with that project, if we were to go forward with that project for the approach, there would be a lot of expenses. I don't know if it could be used to offset that. And then also something I hadn't thought of was the loan we do have. I think we do have a loan with Amherst County. In addition to the bond, there's Amherst County, and I think we recently extended that for another five years. It was, I think it was for about $250,000, but it. Hundred fifty? Hundred fifty? Well, we have money left over. But anyway, that was kind of the sort of thing that I was thinking of, but I think it's, for me, it's helpful to know and get this on the agenda as a discussion item.
The clarity. Very, yes, just.
And so we could always let it accumulate, but for bigger projects down the road, but my hope would be that city staff, you could talk with public works, that hospital, we could start getting input on what to do, what to do with this. And then bring it back for a future agenda item. Any other council discussion? Is there any public, anybody here that would like to make a public comment on this?
I don't mean to belabor this point. If I understood this correctly, the funds are sitting in an account, and when the funds accumulate or reach one million level, that's when they are put into an interest-bearing account?
Well, there's no reason it couldn't be put in an interest-bearing account now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just says, once you get to that point, you have to do something with that interest at that point specifically. That's all.
Just the treatment of the interest, not an underlying principle.
Yes, but it doesn't mean before then you can't put in the interest. I would recommend you put it in an interest-bearing account as soon as you can.
That would, that was my observation.
That was, that was my take.
Yeah, okay. And then, I don't, I haven't seen the specificity of the language or the broadness of the language of this underlying document, but is there, on the theory, that an investment on Main Street that generates sales stature of an important city
But is there, uh, on the theory that an investment on Main Street that generates sales stature of an important city is, uh, an a loan for an investment on Main Street to enhance businesses for imminent for utilization of these funds?
Um, it could probably fall within some of the categories that are listed there, depending on the specific project, but I think there's a fair amount of latitude for all sorts of ideas.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other public comment? Yeah, closest to public comment now, uh, any other additional council discussion questions, comments?
I just have to say that I completely agree with you, Mr. Wise, for sparing account. Right now, when I go to the business side, we'll, we'll show a lot of things going on.
We transfer our money every night. We keep very little in our regular checking account. Most of our money goes to an interest bearing account. We only transfer enough money every day to what we have that would be written in checks. So everything is in an interest bearing account.
There are still that.
So what are the the wishes of the the council? Do we want to give direction?
This is information, isn't it?
Yeah.
Just let's transparent, it lets transparent to public, that what's going on, and I think Mike should be here. Yes.
Yeah. It look like, go ahead.
I will be shortly bringing back an ordinance to in the historic downtown district to allow businesses in that district to not require restrooms in their businesses. Um, and to minimize the requirement for parking spaces that they're required to have and use the public parking on Main Street. Just as Sutter Creek and Jackson have. Um, to assist with the businesses that are trying to get started, like Mr. Carpenter's. Um, but in order to do that, uh, we are going to have to upgrade our bathrooms to A, accessible. And these funds could potentially help do that project.
Thank you, and thank you for the information. Item seven point two, to approve the landscaping plan for McKee Sharpie Park Improvement Plan. Does we have staff approval at least?
This is the last component to come before you. For now, for the park improvement. This is the landscape component. Need your heart state came before you. Last meeting for approval, this is the landscape component. This incorporates all of the community input. Uh, the drawing is complete with all of the community input. Uh, it is a I think a nice drawing with uh, a lot of nice features in it. Uh, the cost estimate is forty two thousand five hundred fifty three dollars. Staff is recommending approval and requesting approval of going out to R and P for the landscaping. You'll notice that, um, we didn't add, unfortunately, too many trees as a lot of the comments that came back were the trees were in the wrong place. Um, in talking with the ar- landscape architect, it's not that we can't come back at a future date to add trees in a different location. But as of right now, the comments that came in with the tree placement where they were, it just didn't pan out to where people were comfortable with where the trees were. Either up against the building where they're already getting shady, or it took up too many spaces from the farmer's market. And we took out one tree in order to, there's a tree that's coming out, uh, Veterans Park that we're going to move up to here in a planter box so that we don't lose the tree. And we're going to replant the rose bushes so we're not losing any of the rose bushes from the memorial up top at the park. We're not losing any of the play structures, they're staying intact where they are now. Uh, we are moving some of the tables at the top end of the park to give a little bit of more, uh, free grass area for the kids to have unimpeded play area. Overall, I think it's a great design, and again, like I said, I am recommending that the council approve the landscape design, and I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. I'll open this for council discussion. Councilmember Amara so?
Well, I think it looks great. I think, you know, I think you took into account all of the concerns, I think, I think the end product here is going to be a product. So I don't see there's really much more time. You can see the whole scope of it, I think it's, uh, been very mindfully done, so thank you.
Councilmember Sim?
Margaret, uh, how do you think we are to address the shade sales? Is that something we can still talk about putting in this this program? Because I I agree, trees are complicated. Shade sales, uh, I think, do the trick, if we if we did it right, with with large poles, you know, higher, so they can't be tampered with, so. I know that adds adds dollars to the to the sole program.
But we can do that in a title T O T tax.
Could that be handled on a separate basis, uh, maybe use some of the other money for that as well?
I'm looking at those independently separate from this project, but sales aren't coming back to the park.
Because even even as as bad as the shade sales were a couple of years ago, they were helpful. They were, they were awful. But I think we can do better.
They're going to come back with, like you said, the stronger poles, um. They're going to be, they're not going to be triangle, they're probably going to be rectangle, so they can go all the way across the park.
We don't cover the park, it's covered.
That area that's that's down, the downside of the park.
I think so.
Where they, where the trees don't cover. Um, but being more downtown during the high sun area this year, I can pay more attention to the sun. I can see where the sun shades helped. And so I can see how important the shade is and where the sun shades really did help, and you'll notice, um, the city put out some tables with some um, pop ups over the tables across the street, the farmer's market, to provide some shade for people to sit at. And, uh, we, I've been trying to find some rectangular, um, shade. So we're looking, we're looking at that now.
It's my thinking that, uh, once you go out to bid, you get numbers back for all these various categories. We can, we can move things around, don't do this, do more of that, depending on, on the, on the price, the the price that they they come in with, right, at some point. That that'd be called tweaking, in order to, if something is horrendous expensive, maybe we'll do that, maybe do some similar, but to to a lesser lesser extent. Yeah, after we get the bids coming in.
Yeah, the best way to do that is just that you build some alternates into the scope. So alternates into the scope, you can build alternates into the scope work. So if you wanted a quote for some shade structures, or say shade sales, you could do that as a bid alternate. So that when you get the bids, you can kind of say, okay, based on this bid, that base bid, there's only a few money for shade sales here, or that's one way to do it, is to build, to to build big alternates into the actual bid document, or just do that separately. And because you don't, you know, hold the existing, so there's probably a couple of ways to do that, for sure.
Thank you. And we are going to leave California cities, and they have all those services down there, and they have people to do part of the work. Do place, I mean, there's all kinds of different companies that provide those services, so we could also get cards and stuff so that we get that point. Call it, yeah, so. It's a target Richard Byrne.
Councilmember White.
Well, I wanna, no, I don't want to talk about anything, it's sick, I'm pretty dark. Um, and I I tell you what the hell with shade, just don't have Keith White at an event, because it seems like every time I have done something, I went over there for an event, it is the hottest day of the month, so I'll just stay away from parking, we'll be fine. Dog is.
Uh, and I I I think it looks great, uh, on paper, it's going to look even better in reality. And so I have no comments, except for, uh, it looks great. Um, I'll now open this for public comment, is there any person here who wants to make a public comment on this agenda item? Yeah, nobody's moving, so I'll close this to public comment, um. Now, there's any other council discussion? So staff is requesting that we approve the landscape plan for the McKee Sharpie Park Improvement Project and authorize going up to bid. Do we have a motion for that? Something like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the landscape plan for E Sharpie Park Improvement Project and authorizing going up to bid. Second.
It's been moved in second, it could be our roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Amara so?
Aye.
Councilmember Sim?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Item eight, council staff communications, brief reports on matters of general interest is eight point one, city managers' report.
Uh, I've got some good news this week. The Military Order of the Purple Heart came into City Hall with a three hundred dollar donation for signage. And so we lacked signage coming in from Hawksview, and we lacked signage coming in from the wastewater treatment in plant in the town. So, um, we're going to get some signage coming in from those two areas of town. And they also gave Dana a Purple Heart coin for all the hard work she does in putting on that event, very well deserved. And, um, the more good news is the water sprinklers at the water sprinkler system at Zeppland Ridge is finally fixed, so we do not have to hand water all of the plants and lawns out at Zeppland Ridge any longer. With one more part that has to come in, but, uh, and that'll be in on Monday. But the system is working without that somehow, not quite sure how that works, but I was told it's working without that. Uh, so that is all very good news, um, that we're not having to hand water everything out there. So two pieces of good news.
Awesome. And on that note, again, hats off to Curtis for the hard work he does out there. Mayor and council members' reports. Councilmember Amara so?
Uh huh.
Councilmember Sim?
I was going to report on the, uh, the Highway forty nine, uh, walk trail. I think I'm going to leave that for future date, maybe, uh, make a agenda item on, uh, something, so. Side with, isn't the night to go into it, but, uh, it's something that, when you talk about, oh, for you're ready to. Go ahead.
Councilmember White?
Um, we had our first round of September, um, on Saturday. Says it looks, uh, a little back to, it'd be fine, it was awful, and, uh, yeah, uh, so hopefully it'll go out for everyone that with that, I would like to thank Dana and Margaret for all their help to that. You guys are very much, you have a big, big help on that, um. This isn't really a report or anything, um, but just something that I feel that I need to do, uh, last week at the farmer's market, I guess, uh, a candidate that was running for council walked by me, this was Don Dunn, and he said hello Keith, and I didn't hear him, my wife told me that was extremely brutal, I believe. She goes, why didn't you say hello back? And matter of fact, I was talking to another candidate at the time. Um, and I would just like to publicly apologize to Don, and when I see him, I'll apologize to his face, I did not mean not to to say hello, I just didn't hear you because I'm deaf, because I'm in position. So that I would like to say that, and then my other thing is, is I would like to congratulate everyone that is in the race right now. It is a, it is a big deal to muster up for for city council, even though it doesn't seem like it's that big of a deal, it is, so congratulations to everybody.
I want to share, like, continue to go to the after meetings. Um, they have a new general manager. Um, there have been a number of staff changes. Um, so other than that, I don't have too much to report, except for that I do hope that the new general manager will come to Plymouth and meet with us and talk about providing some activities in in the city of Plymouth. Uh, we had some, as you all know, bingo, yoga, uh, that sort of thing, but it kind of fell off, I think due to staffing reasons. Would certainly be nice to get those things back, if that's what the community wants, um. Okay, and then I have something, speaking of, uh, candidates, that I want to share on a personal note, so if you all bear with me for a minute. Um, four years ago, I first ran for city council, I'm held to be transparent and honest, and so I want to share with everybody that, um, after much reflection, and with a very heavy heart, I've decided that I will not be actively campaigning for reelection to the city council. I considered withdrawing from the election, but our government code, that's not possible at this time. So what this means is that if somehow I were to get reelected, I would immediately resign. Um, this decision has not been easy, but it's one I must make for the well being of myself and my family. Like so many others, our family has been profoundly affected by the ongoing fentanyl crisis. We have witnessed a loved one's physical and mental health deteriorating due to substance use disorder. My husband and I are deeply saddened by this situation. And I often find myself overwhelmed with grief as we navigate this painful journey. Recently, we we faced a significant Chrysler crisis that has deeply impacted me, and I realize I must take care of my own mental health. This experience has also reinforced the importance of raising awareness about substance use disorder and mental health, which is why I'm sharing this publicly. It's crucial that we eliminate the stigma associated with these issues and create an environment where people feel safe seeking help, whether for themselves or for a loved one. Substance use disorder is a disease, not a moral failing, and it's imperative that we approach it with compassion and understanding. I encourage everyone in our community to show kindness to one another, especially to those who are struggling. If you or someone you know is impacted by substance use disorder or struggling with mental health issues, including thoughts of suicide, please reach out for help immediately. please reach out for help immediately. There is no shame in seeking support. Your life and the lives of those you love are too valuable. There are resources available, and nobody has to face this alone. I want to thank my colleagues on the council, who I consider my friends. I want to thank some staff, especially our city manager, Margaret, and city attorney Frank for your understanding, your support, and to everybody for making our community a better place. Thank you.
I'd like to commend you, Mayor Ackerman, for this statement. Show us.
And on that cheerful note, we'll go to the council request for future agenda items. Councilmember Ann Marusa?
Right after tonight.
Councilmember Sim?
I would like to see, uh, the, the Roya Ditch get back on an agenda in the future, hopefully near future. Because I think we've, we've delayed talking about it for a long time. It's, it's time to get back into that situation.
Do you want to bring up the other item that you mentioned earlier? Do you want to bring up the other item that you mentioned earlier, Councilmember Sim, future of the, uh, you have seventy-four ninety-nine, you're referring to the walk trail. Yes, that would also be very good. Yes, thank you.
Councilmember White?
I'm good at this time.
And then, um, I also was gonna ask for a future agenda item to bring up the West Water Report on the agenda. And then also, as I was reading the minutes, I saw that at the last meeting, you brought up something about a general plan review, which I think we should have a discussion about that, see if there's some way that we could do it in-house, maybe even ask the, um, planning commission commissioners to tackle it on, and they can have like a book look over it. Um, I also, I don't know if we need to have an agenda item about this, or if I could just ask and maybe get some head nods if we, if the city could explore looking at, uh, possibly a four-way stop, stop sign on Main Street and Landrum, there is a crosswalk there. So the benefit would be, uh, for traffic polling, and then also pedestrian safe, uh, safety. So that. Okay. So the, the council would like to bring it back as an agenda item, that would require a traffic study.
Yeah, I mean, you can bring it back to discussion. There, there, there may have to be some, uh, it doesn't necessarily entail, uh, something that has to be done by a traffic engineer. There has to be some way to look at it, that will just go in the sample for our discussion, so that's totally fine.
Okay. I remember, I think a couple of years ago, we put a stop sign on, now we can't discuss this right now, never mind.
No, it's okay. I mean, I think it's helpful so you know when it's gonna come back to use in future agenda, the agenda processes with traffic signs. The California Manual on Vehicle Traffic Control Devices, the M U T C P specifies certain warrants for traffic control devices, including stop, four, four-way stops.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of looking into what the M U T C that, that says, and what our data shows, and bring that to, back to the council for discussion, so that's all that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That is all I have. So we will now adjourn the regular meeting and go into closed session. It's seven twenty-six.
I have no microphone.
I know, just, just.
Okay.
Turn on the machine.
Okay, we are now done with closed session. There's no reportable action. And so the meet, it's 8:08 and the meeting is now adjourned.